Monday, March 3rd, 2014. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Menon.
Present.
Ms. Weenie.
Present.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
Mr. DeKens.
Here.
May Holliday.
Present.
Mr. Booth.
This is America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Menon, do we have any warrants this evening?
We do indeed have ones. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $127,682.11 be forwarded, be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Discussion. Allosum favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
We also have another one. There are no conflicts on this one. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $6,566.4 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment.
Allosum, discussion? Allosum favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Is that it?
That's it, as far as I know.
We do not have a set of minutes because our last meeting was just last week, so we're going to move on. Next is a session of public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the committee, could you please stand, come forward and state your name and your address? Yes.
Ralph Orlando, 4 William Hall Drive. Just a few brief comments, and again, I want to preface it by saying when I stand here, I'm here talking to school committee members exclusively. So the first thing I want to call your attention to is the agenda. As of 4:30 this afternoon, the agenda was nowhere to be found on the webpage. I would think, just judging from what is listed here, Math Curriculum Update, there were quite a few parents here, I think at the last meeting, interested in talking about such a topic. And I think you have an obligation to get the agenda out. I don't know who puts it there, how it gets there, but it was not there. The second concern I want to call your attention to is we've always talked about, or at least you've always talked about, an earlier discussion of the budget. And although we now have had budget updates as part of the old business each and every school committee meeting, we're already into March, and I have seen not a single discussion point other than what Mr. Parent presented last time addressing the upcoming new school budget. And I would call your attention to that, and then I think you're at about the time when you need to start discussing that. The third thing is, I did come late to the last meeting, but I reviewed some of the information on the SED budget. And I would call your attention to the email that I drafted to all the school committee members from earlier today. The actual budget consists of a fairly large six-figure number, and someone did the calculation that that was the equivalent of 12 full-time equivalent teacher positions. There are 30 out-of-district students, and I would propose that someone on your committee take a look at, at least after maybe surveying the parents of those 30 students, how many would be interested if they could get the same services for their student in district. Because, you know, it seems like a large number of students, and there may be some aggregate kind of learning problems that could be put together into one category. At least as I look at the warrants, there are several areas where four or five students are going to the same facility. And with the additional savings of that six-figure number, perhaps a few FTEs could be allocated to those special education needs, those individual aggregate students, such that you could have a significant cost savings in providing that those types of services be the aggregate for a number of students in the district. That type of analysis, I think, is well within your domain and should be taken a look at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment at this time? Thank you. We seem to be missing our student representative. It's a Tuesday evening, so we're going to give her a little leeway with that. So the first, we're going to go into the first item on the agenda, which is old business, a budget update from the superintendent, which-
Has not changed in the last six days. We are, we remain where we were. What I can tell you is that I am just completing, wrapping up all of my meetings with building leadership in terms of discussing the budget. And I have one more person to meet with, and Nancy and I, Nancy Lysick and I have been spending many hours on the budget.
You had presented us with a, and I'm trying to find it, a budget timeline.
Yes.
Are we, do you have, oh, thank you, Mr. Cole. Oh, I knew you'd have something. So we are at March. Superintendent presents budget to school committee.
We'll be doing that at the end of March, yes.
Okay. So that, March into April, but can you just talk a little bit about all the work that's going on behind the scenes to prepare for this budget? I think we focus mostly on this budget crisis, and I'd just like to let everyone know how much work is going on for next year's budget as well. So can you-
Sure.
-talk about that a little bit? Thank you.
What I can tell you is that what began, actually has been going on for several months now, my meeting individually with building principals and talking with them about priorities within their buildings, as well as looking at our staffing patterns across the district, and in looking at our enrollment projections for next year, and looking at how the building projects will be impacting the budget for next year as well. So there have been many, many, many meetings that have gone on up to this point in terms of my learning about all of that, and in meeting individually with building principals, as well as special education, as well as curriculum. And then also, there have been many meetings of the entire leadership team, where we have been talking about issues like safety. Obviously, busing and transportation has come up several times, because that, as you know, impacts start and end times, and that has also been a big topic of conversation. So all of that has been going on behind the scenes in planning for next year's budget, as well as managing this year's budget, in trying to keep expenditures to a minimum, knowing that we have a deficit situation, so.
Does anybody have a comment or question about that? Because I know we focused mostly on this year's budget in our public sessions, but I just wanted to let everyone know that work is being done diligently on next year's budget as well. Did you have anything to add to that, Angela, or?
Well, the only thing I would add is that, you know, it's been really good conversations. And because Susan is new to the district, she's asking different questions than maybe we've talked about in the most recent history, you know, because she's trying to gain a depth of understanding that forces us to dig a little deeper in our conversations about the budget. So I think it's been a really, it's been a good process. It's, you know, it's always a difficult one, but I feel like we're making good progress. I took the latest documents. Susan and Nancy had worked on updating all of the documents with the work that had happened so far, and I took those all home over the weekend. And I think people are being pretty thoughtful.
Good.
The other, another area that I think it's important that you understand, it's been one of my areas of focus, is that I want the leadership team to understand that when we're making decisions as a team, that it's important for me that everyone has an understanding of pre-K through grade 12, that we need to, we're making decisions that impact across the budget. And I want the administrators to be part of that conversation, so that we are making well-educated decisions, and so that it's understood that when we make decisions that have to do with pre-K-K, those are just as impactful as decisions we make at the high school level. But that it's all interwoven, and it's all part of one budget, and we need to make sure that there is, there is equal understanding, so that when decisions are made, building principals will be able to discuss with their staff why decisions were made. And I want the school committee to have that same understanding, so that the public will understand why certain decisions are made. So that has been a real focus on my part, to make sure that as we move forward, we will move forward as a team.
That's great. And the public hearing, have we set a date?
No, I have not set a date for it.
Okay. Mr. Menon?
Yeah, I think this is all really, really encouraging. And I would just, as I often do, want to make sure that we are as transparent as we can possibly be, that I want to feel confident that when leadership is talking about what they feel their needs are, that there's at least some grounding and feedback from their councils, from their local community, so that we can, you know, so that we don't end up in a situation which was where I sort of jumped on the bus, which is, oh, this is a done deal. Once it hits the school committee, nothing's going to change, and that's the way it is. I have no problem with having a really well-informed, thorough document in front of me to provide feedback on, but I, it makes me feel a lot better to know that leadership is really canvassing, working with not just the teachers, not just the staff, but also with the parents and the community to help set those priorities. And I would just encourage you to continue to do that. I know that you've begun to do that, and I think that that's a really good trend.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Now, we're going to new business. We did get a lot of conversation at the last public conversation session about math. So we have asked Assistant Superintendent Angela Beck and pre-K through 8 STEM Coordinator Liz Kinsley to give us an update on our current math programming. I want to thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
You too, but you have to. Am I going to have to move?
I'm going to make this on, Cheryl.
I just want to make sure everything's stuck with the light thing with me.
Did everybody get one of these handouts?
They did.
Thank you for sending it all politically as well.
Just the PowerPoint.
Oh, dear.
I think that.
We have to conclude all of this by the end of the session.
Yes. Yes, you must.
We, there'll be a quiz.
I thought there wasn't going to be any.
I just, I want to say thank you to both Liz and Angela for putting this together so quickly, because we just met last week, and these topics came up. So thank you for both of you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. We would have got the handouts to you earlier if we had had just a little more time, but we're going to work through them with you anyway this evening, so. I hope that we will address many of the concerns that came up during the public conversation. Susan had met with us and discussed some of the things that came up. So if we missed something in this presentation, don't hesitate to ask us to clarify something that you may have heard during that time that we didn't touch upon. Okay? And we've got it up. Great. Okay. We're going to start by talking a little bit about the goals around math with the current work that we have underway right now.
Okay. So these are our goals that Angela and Susan and I have kind of talked about all throughout the year. Because I was new and Susan was new, these have kind of morphed over the course of the last several months. But we pretty much agree that these goals are really important for all of our math students, K to 12. So we're looking at increasing student interest and engagement in math, as well as to develop an understanding of the importance of math within science, technology, and engineering as well. And we're finding throughout the district that there are high levels of interest in both math and science and STEM. And that is, we're looking at that through participation in the middle school math team, through STEM course at the middle school with Brad Bockus, and also from Sarah Ledbeater's work at the high school and other areas as well. And we're also looking at increasing the rigor across all student, student grade levels. And we're finding that the Common Core itself has really forced us to look at math in a little bit of a different way, more integrated, and there is more rigor. So as teachers have gone through and looked at the curriculum and standard requirements, they've found that those curriculum standards are beefier than what we have had before. And that's resulting in a lot of interest from the teachers as well. So we're not just seeing more student engagement, but we're also seeing teacher engagement as well, and pedagogical, you know, engagement as well. And we're looking at increasing student achievement, of course, on state mandated math assessments. So that would be the MCAS and then soon-to-be PARC assessments. And we're also thinking about the achievement gaps that we see between students in identified subgroups, such as special ed, ELL, low income, or even gender. And then we're also looking at increasing differentiation of instruction by using research-based instructional methods and practices, which has been ongoing. But this is a really good time for us to look at our instructional practices, and look at our programs as they are now, and see if we can find a way to really increase the differentiation, and look at more updated instructional practices as well. So, and we're looking at, looking at professional development needs and mentoring for faculty who need it, or who feel like they would benefit from some, a little bit more professional development around math content and processes. And we're hoping to increase, by doing that, math capacity, pedagogy, and content teachers, content knowledge of teachers. And we're looking towards enhancing intervention remediation and enrichment opportunities for students. And we're looking at trying to develop a well-articulated plan for intervention remediation and enrichment for all students in at-risk populations, as well as the regular education students. And so we've found that early interventions in literacy have paid big dividends at the early elementary level, and we've really been talking a lot about how we could sort of bring that model to scale for also math interventions, especially to fill those early needs and early gaps for our struggling students in math. To develop and implement common assessments that measure student growth, so the state is asking us to develop a series of common assessments called DDMs, which are District Determined Measures. And I know that we've spoken a little bit about that before, but we'll be seeing that work as an ongoing project for all of our teachers. And what we're seeing is, a lot of the teachers have developed some pilots, and they're doing a lot of that DDM work, which is really taking the form of formative assessments throughout all the content areas and all the grade levels. And then we're looking at vertical alignment to the Common Core, which we really talked a lot about. When I was hired, we thought that that might be a lot of the work that we did this year, was doing a lot of vertical work. And that has frankly taken a little bit of a backseat to some of the other mandates that the states sort of pushed on the district and the teachers. And so now where we've been talking, Angela and I have been talking with Mark Littlefield at the high school about developing sort of a summer workshop where we could get interested teachers from all the grade levels, to look at developing some kind of a vertical team of teachers that can look at best practices, that can look at the Common Core, and that can look at ways of seeing how the standards are being articulated throughout all the grade levels. So those are our sort of big-picture goals. And then, shall I keep going? Does anyone have any questions, or, yeah, sure?
I'm sorry. But this is really, this is really a good way to start here, because most of these things came up last week. Could you just talk a little bit more about how we are differentiating instruction at our levels? Because I guess that's the thing that, you know, we heard with the rigor and kids that are ready to move on. And so can you give me either a vision or a reality about individualized instruction in math?
Sure. And that takes different forms, based on where you are in the K to 12 continuum. And, but what, something that we've, we've talked a little bit about, or more and more about, is if we've got these really high-quality instructional materials, and the states put out some MCU's, which are model curriculum units, and there are other open resources for model curriculum units, and they're very well-aligned, and they're also very rigorous, and they have a variety of instructional strategies that you would use. And for instance, I've got an example of one of the lessons from a model curriculum unit that's in your packet, which we, you can look at now, and-
No, I don't mean to interrupt.
Okay.
I don't disturb your-
But what ends up happening is that we, at this point, we have several teachers that are piloting some of these MCU's, and piloting some of these really well-aligned materials. So our next goal is going to be getting feedback from those teachers, and then feeling, trying to find a way to support the rest of the teachers that teach at that grade level, so that they can be kind of up to speed on those instructional materials as well. So I would say, right now, a lot of people are at a lot of different places and have a lot of great ideas. But I think one of the benefits of having the early release days and the time that we work with the, during the staff meetings, we spend all that time with the teachers, kind of looking at what the best practices are. And because they have that really well, a bunch of time where they can do that, that's the time that we've been able to look at some of these standards, look at some of these standards-based materials, look at some of these MCU's, and seeing how it's being taught within the classrooms, and then how we can maybe bring that to scale with the rest of the teachers within that grade level. So it's not necessarily certain things at certain levels, but rather sort of a big-picture way of helping everybody to support each other. And then, once some of these materials are adopted, making sure that they're being implemented with fidelity across the grade level. So all students get pretty much a similar experience. It's not going to be always the same, but the ideas are really the same, and the presentation and the outcomes are the same.
I think one of the other things that I might add to that would be, you know, we've come before you and talked a lot about developing common assessments. And we use the information that we're getting from those assessments to tell us where our students are. So rather than starting from a program and following a teacher's manual that says, you know, on day four, say this, and move forward, we're actually determining where the students who are sitting in front of the teacher are at on that learning continuum, and making decisions about entry points for instruction for the variety of learners that you have in front of you, and points of enrichment that are needed around any particular concept or skill that's being taught at the time. And because we're using more assessments than we ever have before, we have more data on our learners. So we're gaining a better understanding of who the learners are in any given classroom on any day, all the time. And the more information we have about how our students are progressing, how they're growing, where they are at, we can address their needs better. So, you know, it requires a lot of conversation. It requires looking at student work collaboratively. It requires conversation between practitioners around what strategies they're employing that are working in one classroom, that may not be working as well in another classroom, and sharing those practices together, as well as professional development about how to expand one's repertoire, so to speak, in incorporating a variety of strategies.
So can I just, I'm in a fifth-grade classroom, and you've just done a unit on, I don't know what you do, unit on. And you've done your assessment, and there are some students that came out right on par, they're ready to move on to the next concept. There are some students that didn't get it. What do you do?
You approach instruction much like you would in a literacy classroom in small groups.
And is that happening?
That is happening. That happens quite frequently in our classrooms. As a matter of fact, a lot of our math instruction at various levels starts with a launch of a teacher launching a particular concept, and teaching that to a whole group, some direct instruction from the teacher for maybe 10 minutes. And then students break off into groups, into discovery time. And some of those students will get more individualized attention from the teacher during that time. Other students will have time to really collaborate. Other students will have time to reach beyond where they are. And then the teacher comes back to direct the findings that have happened during that class time.
May I, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just sort of pick up on that piece a little bit. So what currently is happening? I mean, that's encouraging in the classroom, but what are we doing, you're basing it on a series of assessments, not just MCAS results in clear, which is wonderful. So what are we doing currently if this strategy isn't working?
Which strategy?
In the classroom, you've, as Cheryl said, you're a fifth-grade class, you have some students who are right on par, some who are not getting it. You work in a small group, you are giving extra time during that particular class, but it's still not there. They're still not getting it. So what do we do for those students now?
Well, we're just getting ready to launch an after-school. I don't want to call it an extra-help session, because it's actually-
Club.
It's, yeah, we're calling it a literacy and math club, where we're inviting students that we have enough data on to say that really more time in a content area. I mean, one of the strongest pieces of research in the area of math is just more math. If you can give the children more time in this content area, huge benefits come from that. And so this is to provide those students with additional time, and that would be after-school. So that's one of the things we're doing. Teachers are also, you know, provide extra help after school for students who are struggling. Sometimes we use flex time, say at a middle school, where we have an opportunity then to provide some additional support, or pull a small group together and focus on an area that students might be struggling with. We are continually trying to identify the types of interventions that we might be able to put in place. We use Study Island. We use a couple other software programs where students can work more independently, as well as at home, to get some of those things. So there are a variety of things in place, but honestly, the goal here to enhance intervention remediation and enrichment is a significant one, because the more we learn, the more information we get, the more we can pinpoint the types of intervention remediation or enrichment that we need to put in place.
And a lot of that, a lot of the work that we're doing with interims and some of those formative assessments, those are identifying certain students that have certain, let's say deficiencies, or areas that they are having a challenge in. But by looking at the whole grade at one time, then we can then really sort of target those skills that those, however many kids there are, maybe 10 kids, and then we can regroup them. We can find time during their day, depending on what their schedule looks like, to then have kind of a focused attention on those things. And it has, it has really spurred some great conversations between the teachers, because sometimes they'll say, well, all of my kids did really well on this one question, but your kids were really struggling on that one question. What are you doing in class that helps your kids to understand that? When I look at my kids as a cohort, they can't- That that helps your kids to understand that when I look at my kids as a cohort, they can't, you know, tell time. How come your kids can tell time? What are you doing? So those conversations have been very rich within the grade level because they're using each other as resources and it's, it's been very powerful. And they're very honest with saying, oh, my gosh, none of my kids know that. How did you get them to do that? So so those are things that that have helped us a lot, too. And both Angela and I and Emily Russell have been in those meetings a lot, with those data meetings, and saying, well, what if you did this? What if you did that? How about if I help you with this or whatever? So, you know, we're always in and out of the classrooms, helping them, you know, find ways and strategies that will pinpoint some of these kids that just have these little things and all they need is a little boost. So
The other thing, you know, um, oh, I'm sorry, Nick, did you have your hand up?
I do, I can listen.
One of the other things, if you remember a little while ago, we gave you a handout that was a reflection that we asked the teachers to do after their professional development sessions on the release day. And part of that reflection is what kinds of things came up? What did you accomplish? What standards were you aligning your curriculum to or talking about instruction? And what kind of support do you need as a result of those conversations? And so we frequently get good information from those reflections, saying, this is where we are. This is where we're stuck.
Right.
And that's when Liz or Emily or I will come in and then work with a group more individually around some of those needs as they're identifying them.
Do you have enough administrative support to be able to get into the classrooms and support all the teachers that need curriculum support?
No.
I knew you were going to say that.
It, you know, it's a juggling act and you have to prioritize and do the best you can.
I've been waiting a really long time to hear next question.
I have, too.
Okay.
Better be good, though.
Right.
So, okay, this this establishes what we're doing with the great, with a large percentage of our students. The the students that are doing well, the students that need help. What are we doing for the students where we want to bust through that ceiling to new heights? What are we doing for the third grader that's ready for trigonometry? That is part of what I haven't heard enough about, I think, in this conversation about differentiation of instruction. What are we doing to 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 go that one step further? Take them to infinity and beyond, as Buzz Lightyear would say.
May, can I just, can I just tell a story?
I don't know.
One of the, one of the first-grade teachers is doing a model curriculum unit. And it actually comes out of the New York Engage NY, which is their ma- math curriculum. And she said to me, I have been working on this first, you know, curriculum unit for Engage NY. And I said, oh, how's it going? And I wanted to go and see her. And so we went and we talked and I, you know, sat in on a couple of her classes and I saw what the kids were doing. And she said, there's something that is happening here that I'm really surprised about and I did not expect to happen. And I said, well, what's that? And I thought she was going to say, I don't know what I thought she was going to say. She said, but the way that I'm approaching this is so much more rigorous that the, that the skills that the kids have to do, it was adding and subtracting. And in first grade, you know, that's, those are basically mastery skills that kids all have to have. But because of the way it's presented and the, because of the way it's kind of keeps spiraling back to the relationship between adding and subtracting, she said, what I'm finding is that my most able students are really engaged because what they're trying to do is they're trying to find the most efficient strategy. So what all the other, you know, what many of the kids are doing is they're just trying to figure out what the patterns are and what the relationship is between adding and subtracting. But the higher-level kids are not bored because they're not saying, I already know how to do this because you're just making me add, you know, one plus two, one plus three, one plus four, one plus five. But rather because it's about the relationship between adding and subtracting, she said, my top kids are, they've stopped sitting in a corner and, you know, wishing they were anyplace else, but they're really engaged in what's going on and they're really starting to say, okay, I know how this works, but now I'm going to try and find the algorithm or find the most efficient strategy, or I'm going to be able to to defend my strategy, which is a little bit different. And so she's finding that kids are kind of skipping steps and they're going to another place where it's extending the knowledge, but it's part of those curriculum units. And she was really surprised and so was I. So
A comment I would make in in doing a walkthrough a couple of weeks back, I happened to spend about fifteen minutes in a particular classroom. And one of the things that the strategy that it was during math and one of the things the teacher did while I was there is that she was having, and the kids were working in small groups, but she had each group report out on what strategy they had used. And it was fascinating to hear the differences between what one group had done and what another group had done. And it was the the conversation that went on was really teaching the kids three new ways, three new strategies. But it was, it was very well done. So
And I guess one of the reasons I asked the question is, these are some success stories. I think we need to talk as much about what we're doing to reach out for these students as we are for some of the remedial students. Sometimes because we have the the DSE hanging over our heads, we focus on what are we doing to get grades up? And I I also want to make sure that we are not forgetting that we've got kids. I don't know whether it's a handful or in some cases just two and in other cases ten. I don't know. But kids who, and this happens not only in math, but in all subjects, are ready to reach well beyond where they're currently being instructed and how we. That, to me, is where you truly see the the excellence in differentiated instruction is where you can truly see that both extremes are being handled well. And yes, the great masses is learning what they need to learn.
I I agree with that. One of the things I was just going to connect that to is if you remember a couple of years ago when we had Dr. Chen in district doing a lot of professional development with our math teachers. This strategy that Liz is talking about with taking it beyond just understanding the concept, but learning the most efficient way to problem-solve, going in it with more depth around concepts, was exactly the work that he was doing with our teachers in teaching them that that's, you know, it differentiation doesn't mean that you need to write different lessons for all of the individual learner in your classroom. It means that you need to know how to work within that lesson to reach all of your learners where they are.
And sometimes it's about looking at math as a tool, you know, to to solve other problems in other areas. And so I think once kids become engaged with math and love math because it helps them solve problems, then that also improves their, you know, their self-confidence, but also their understanding of the value of math. So so that's what we're seeing a lot, too. When you ramp it up a little bit, you think, oh, well, some kids are going to just be falling behind, but they, they don't. They rise to the challenge because it's more engaging.
Okay. I'm going to move us on to a little bit of talk around the alignment to the Common Core state standards because you've heard us say this repeatedly this year, like such, this is such a heavy emphasis. This is our top priority goal in the district across all grade levels. So I just want to talk to you just briefly about what that means. In this process of aligning our curriculum to the Common Core state standards, as well as the other state standards, because in certain areas, we don't have Common Core standards. We've got state standards. But specific to the Common Core, it's required us to unpack those standards. And when we say unpack, it means ta- take them apart, look at the meaning of every aspect of those standards because they're involved. And it really takes some thought and some conversation around what each of those standards mean to ensure that we're really addressing them in our instruction. We needed to identify curriculum and instructional gaps associated with our our understanding of these standards. That process has required us to realign our curriculum maps. So curriculum maps were pretty solidified in the area of ELA and literacy and math. And this made us have to take them apart again and say, okay, what areas of those curriculum maps are aligned? What areas are not? What things need to be? There are certain parts of the Common Core standards that need to be moved to a completely different grade level because now something that was once a sixth-grade standard is now a fifth-grade standard. It needed to be moved into the fifth-grade maps, which meant, guess what? Then fifth-grade maps had to be looked at and fourth grade and third grade and second grade. So it it's been a large undertaking. One of our big goals that Liz started to talk about is to really be able to articulate a math curriculum. One of the goals that we have for the Summer Institute that we hope to put together is to really be able to identify what the mastery, concepts, and skills need to be at every grade level. Because one of the things, as we talk to math teachers, that they repeatedly tell us that holds them back is the need to do so much review around things, around concepts and skills that were taught in a year before but were not mastered. And so they spend all this time re-teaching things and we're losing ground with our pacing around how we're working. So we're really hoping that as a result of that work during the Summer Institute, we'd be able to walk away with some absolutes, so to speak, that mean these are the mastery concepts and skills that are expected at the end of each year so that teachers in the next school year can have more confidence, that they can move from that point, a short review, move on, and continue with the curriculum.
And a lot of that unpacking work that we're doing, we've done a lot of it this year. And the teachers have been very engaged in it and they even have little notes that they check and they're looking at as they go through. But what they're finding is that there are very important mastery topics and skills that if you, you really need to focus on all throughout the year to make sure that those students are exiting with those skills. And at the early grades, it's, it's not a ton. It's like, you know, adding and subtracting in first grade. If the kids can't tell time, that's not the end of the world. If they can't add and subtract and don't know the relationship between adding and subtracting, that is the end of the world. That does mean that we are sending someone to first to second grade without really the skills that they really need to have. So we've spent a lot of time kind of identifying what those are based on, you know, what the, what the research says. You know, it's not just something I dreamed up, but it's, it's what, you know, the experts say are the mastery skills that students have to have to move on.
We all know that math is a subject that needs to be scaffold. The learning has to be scaffold. The other thing that is associated to the alignment to the Common Core standards is we're, we're spending a lot of time researching instructional resources, high-quality instructional resources. One of the things that I am most proud of in this work that we've been doing in the area of math is that we have shifted our thinking from programs to curriculum. And I know that you've heard over the years a million times, well, we use this program. This is, and our teachers even talked about math that way. They talked about math as their program. So whatever the publishing company was and the, and the curriculum writers that worked for that publishing company made the decisions about our curriculum for our students because the program was driving the curriculum. And the co- the work we've done around Common Core has forced us to move away from that. And we are now basing our curriculum on the standards and we are looking at a variety of resources that will help us teach those standards to the best of our ability.
Is, is, what's the level of engagement among the teachers in terms of this activity? And is there a feeling that, you know, this is the right thing to do and that we'll be in a better place after we go through this exercise that takes a lot of time? A lot of people are spending a lot of time on this.
A lot of time.
Or is it being viewed more as a, as a chore, you know?
I think there's both. I thi- I I would say perspective. We've got both of those perspectives. I had a teacher tell me at the middle school level just a couple of weeks ago, you know, this is messy. This is messy work. It starts off kind of clean and then it gets really messy before it all comes together. And during the messy part, it's frustrating. And so this teacher looked at me and said, Angela, just tell me what to use and tell me what to teach and I will be very happy to do it. I just don't want to be in this place anymore where it doesn't seem as clear as it should be to me. And I understood that frustration perfectly. But by the time we got done with the session and we talked about the why, you know, and the importance of what we were doing, that attitude had changed. It, this is difficult work and this is a process. This isn't work that gets done overnight. You don't get together a couple of times and think that you've got the answers at the end of that. So there is a continuum of emotions associated around this. We, I've had teachers say, just let's pick a resource, any resource, I don't care, I'll use it. And that's just frustration talking, you know.
And you never get there.
I know.
You never get there because you always have different kids every year sitting in front of you. So you never get there.
Right.
And and that's part of what, you know, I mean, what my hope is, is that we continue to expand the skill set that the teacher has. That's really what you want to do, is you want to continue to expand their skill set so that they, they know when they see a particular child have difficulty with a concept, they, they maybe have three different places that they can go instead of one. And that's really, but but the work is never, that work is never done.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like you need to do that in order to keep the teachers engaged because, you know, to the extent that we could add value as, as we go through this process, you know, obviously, we should try to do that as much as possible and kill two birds with one stone.
Absolutely.
And I think one of the other kind of interesting things about it is because, because our programs, which we would, will call investigations at the elementary level and connected math at the middle level, because they were so poorly aligned to the new Common Core, it just left us with no choice. Like when you, when you point out the holes to the teachers, they're like, well, we could fill these gaps, but that's just like starting from scratch. So for, for the teachers, once they first, once they said, oh, well, we'll just do this and this and this, but then when they found the extent of where the, where things had gone either up a grade or down a grade or that they weren't, you know, well enough done, then they were just like, okay, fine. If I'm going to do all this work anyway, I might as well do it, do the, and look for the very best resources that I can. And so that's been kind of, kind of empowering, I think, to a lot of the teachers because they like planning, you know, they like developing lessons. They like doing that. I mean, I don't think they really want to start from day one and go to day whatever, but, but some of the things that they're doing don't have to be tossed.
And, excuse me, Liz.
Sure.
Nobody knows better than the teachers
Right.
about how to address the needs of their students. Nobody knows that better. So when they get frustrated and say, oh, you know, I wish somebody would just tell me, they don't really mean that because they're really the experts. They are the ones who know the best way to address the needs of the students in front of them. But as a result of all of that, we are in the process, this is a question that Mr. Cole had asked last year, and we were, we, the process was way too young at that point. But we are now at the point in this process where we're starting to identify what some of the budgetary implications of this are going to be. And we don't have hard and fast numbers yet, but we're starting to see it come together. We're starting to realize what kind of gaps we have. You know, we look at the programs that we have that teachers are comfortable with and because they're comfortable with them and they know these programs so well, they're able to pull the pieces from these programs that are great and address the needs. So these programs are, it's not that they are not still valuable. It's that they're not still valuable to start day one and take through day one hundred and eighty, you know. So they're picking and choosing from that.
Okay, so then we broke it down into levels span, grade spans, and just sort of an overview of what's going on at each one of those levels so that you can have a sense of how it, it really spirals through, starting in, in the pre-K years. So we find that teacher
So we find that teachers, PLCs, work, they are working collaboratively on curriculum alignment during release days. And the teacher teams at all the elementary levels have worked very hard to unpack the Common Core and in doing so have identified significant gaps in content and rigor. And we've just really talked a lot about that. Then we're looking also at teacher resources. So these are some, some of the resources that teachers are currently using and some of the resources that they're piloting and some of the supports that they're also using. So investigations has been the, um, the program that we've been using over the last several years at the elementary level. They're using now model curriculum units that have been released by the state as well as by other, other curriculum designers and researchers. We're looking at websites that we either have paid for within the district or we are looking also at, you know, free and open source technology resources and as well as teacher-created materials. Many of the teachers have done a lot of work in collaborative teams around taking some of the standards that they felt like were not being well addressed and created their own materials for those. And both Angela and I have looked those over when they have finished them and given them feedback on those, those teacher-created materials. They are, have been using the investigations curriculum, but now they're, you know, they're really finding that, that that's not meeting the needs of the students as well as, as it should be. And then the gaps, we've talked, we've talked a lot about the gaps already, so, and they're being addressed in a variety of ways. We're using interim formative assessments. We talked a little bit about that already. We're having great data conversations during either the half-day releases or during their faculty meetings. And there, some examples of the pre-K to five interim assessments are in your packet. So if you look at the first handout, handout number one, is, it's got a pre-K and I thought it would be a great place to start because you can see that there are even standards, math standards for pre-kindergarten. And so you can see that it's basically around counting and cardinality. So having children, early, very young children understand the relationship between numbers and making the, the jump between what a written number is and how many that is. And so what you're seeing is a standards-based math assessment that the pre-K teachers give to their students. And this was one that they're about to, to be giving. And you can see it's pretty rigorous for pre-kindergartners. They need to identify numbers and patterns and money and shapes. And they're, it's, it's amazing that they've done as well as they have on these assessments. This is the second one that they've been given. And the kids have really done an amazing job already. So we're starting really off as the earliest that we can to, you know, help kids understand numbers and have some, you know, pretty good number sense. And so that is handout number one. And handout number three is the same thing for grade three, but this is an analysis that the grade three teachers and I did based on the interim assessment that we did in January. And so I'm not going to read through it with you, but you can see that on this, it gives the question and it also gives how the students did with the question, some general comments about how the kids did and whether they should be thinking, the teachers might want to think about certain ways of approaching some of the more difficult problems. And it goes all the way through. And you'll also notice that the standards are right on this. They're not on the student version, but they are on the analysis. So now we can look at what the standards are for each one of these questions and then we can ask this question, again, a different question, but for this standard so that we're sure that the students are understanding and mastering these different concepts. So you can see that the teachers have done a lot of work on the analysis and it's done a lot for them to be able to inform their instruction and think about other instructional strategies that they might like to incorporate as they go through.
One thing I just want to add to that is, you know, this is where we've been talking about. This is why we need the assessment data, because the assessment data leads to instructional adjustments. The more information we have, the more we can adjust our, our instruction. Bruce.
Yeah, can I just answer a question?
Sure.
I, I was looking at, in, in handout number two.
Yep.
Question thirteen.
Okay.
And the analysis.
Yeah.
And I was, I was sort of intrigued by the second sentence there that says, "Students did very well with graphing, but compare seemed to confuse some." Is that, is that, is that a vocabulary issue? Is that a concept issue that hasn't been quite grasped? Because I know in the past we've, you know, we've prepared students to plus and minus numbers and then on tests we've added them to subtract and add and...
That's an excellent question and that is something that comes up all the time when we look at these, because I write most of these questions. And I write most of these questions based on the standards. And so sometimes they'll say, well, we don't, we don't say how many equal shares are there in that. And I say, well, the standards do and the MCAS does. And so they're like, it does, really? And so those, a lot of those conversations that we have lead them to say, well, we're going to have to make sure that we're approaching all of these questions in different ways so that we're not setting anybody up. And so, and I think what you'll see, a lot of times we'll look at it and we'll say, I wonder if this was a vocabulary question. So if you look at the general, I didn't number these pages, but if you, if you see, see the, the first page which says interim assessment, teachers, all grade three teachers, and if you look at the general comments, if you look at down one, two, three, four bullets, it says, I wonder if vocabulary might have been an issue. So when I asked, or when the teachers were asking for a multiplication sentence, did they not understand what that means? Or would they, would they have been asked a different way? Compare area, perimeter, input, output table, writing equation, rule of values. So you can see that we can identify some kids who either have literacy issues or whether it's just the fact that the teachers aren't approaching it or aren't introducing the vocabulary. So yes, absolutely. I think that's an excellent question. And that's a question that the kids or that the teachers will oftentimes ask when they're looking at analyzing these, this data. Well, I know my kid can do, that my kids can do that. How come they weren't able to do that? Well, you know, sometimes it is the way we ask it. And so, um, so, and that's, that's just, that's just part of the, that's part of the analysis and a really good starter for some of the conversations. So absolutely. And then if you're looking at handout number three, it's more of the same. You're looking at a different kind of an assessment. So this is a grade three pre, excuse me, grade five pre-assessment. And so, and this is just looking at one of the standards. So it's just numbers and operations in base ten. We find that, that middle school or, or later elementary students have trouble with this. And so this was designed as a pre-test and post-test for a couple of reasons. The pre-test was designed because we were expecting that some of the kids would come in with this material or this understanding. And so then that was going to result in the teachers being able to extend for some kids because they're doing a lot of grouping, everyone is, but in the fifth grade they were. And then really being able to break it down into the standards that they, the kids needed to know. And then what do we really have to focus on for this unit? Can we just, you know, take some of these things out that the kids would already have mastered? Or do we really need to tackle everything in here? So what they were finding is that they didn't have to do the whole unit from start to finish, but rather they could only focus on some of the ones that the kids had, had not mastered.
And that creates a real efficiency.
Right.
Around instruction. The more information we have upfront by pre-testing kids and finding out what kind of prior knowledge they have before the instruction starts, if, that's what I mean when I talk about an entry point. That gives you the entry point for instruction.
And it also gives us a chance to enrich or it gives us a chance to remediate for some kids that are, that don't get it or that some kids that have the whole thing down. So, and then the last page on, in that number three handout is an example of one of the PARC questions that has been released. So PARC, I'll just remind you, is what's taking the place of MCAS.
Maybe.
And maybe, right, maybe after a couple of years. But this is an example of a question that I saw some of the fifth grade teachers using in their class. And the kids were doing a really great job with it, but it was very open-ended and I was really enjoying how the teachers were kind of presenting this in a way that, where they weren't just teaching it. But it's such a, it was such a rich problem that they got a lot of different strategies for solving it. So it's kind of like what Susan was saying before, there are a variety of ways that kids can then approach a problem like this based on, you know, what they have for prior knowledge and also whether they're looking for different kinds of ways of solving it. So that was just a, one more thing that, that kind of went along with that elementary level. All right. So let's, I'll speed it up a little bit. So this is a middle school. So all you guys probably want to go home and don't want to blab on about math because we love it.
This is good. I don't think I've passed the grade, but I'll be up there.
Yes, you could. If you had our teachers, you could.
Well, you know what? We could help you.
There's conversation over here about volume. I mean, you know.
About the preschool. So middle school math, teachers are working collaboratively as everybody else is. They're really focused on alignment as well as everybody else is. The middle school math classes are intentionally heterogeneously grouped. I know that was a concern that was expressed with the exception of, did you find out how many classes they had of that?
I believe there's two.
Two. So the, they have two, we understand there are two eighth grade algebra classes, but everybody else has an, has heterogeneously grouped classes. And that's intentional because all kids up until, if they have mastered the skills, the pre-algebra skills that they need to have to go into that algebra class, before that they are, it's really important for kids of all levels to be able to work together, just to support each other. And kids are going to have mastery of certain, like some kids are linear learners. Some kids are more spatial learners. And so when you, when you intentionally, heterogeneously group kids, then what you do is you provide an opportunity for all kids to work with all other kids and to be able to be successful and to be the star in their group when they talk about, you know, solid figures versus linear algebraic figures versus some engineering concepts. So...
In addition to that, it's really important to understand that at this stage of development, the research shows us the best approach to instruction is to differentiate it, not to level students into any kind of a track as we may have recognized it from years ago because it's far too early to start a pattern like that. The most important thing is that the mastery of these foundational skills at all levels and not to accelerate students too rapidly during this time of development.
My quick comment last week was questions about the, particularly eighth grade algebra. Is there an entrance exam? And what is the qualifying factor?
I can tell you that.
And do all students that qualify, are we able to put them in Algebra II? I mean, do we always have, do we have two classes? I don't seem to, I don't know the answer to that.
Let me, let me first speak to the, it's on the, where is it? Did you bring your notes?
I thought I did. Thought I had my notes in there.
The Iowa Placement Test. They're using, I had this all written down in my notes and I don't see my notes. Anyway, oh, here they are. They are using the Iowa Algebra Aptitude Test in grade seven along with a basic skills assessment that they're using. MCAS scores, seventh grade average, classroom average of ninety-two or greater as well as the seventh grade teacher recommendation. So they're using five criteria for, to qualify for the eighth grade algebra class. Student needs to meet three out of the five criteria to be considered.
Can you tell, I mean...
Sure. Want me to tell you what those are?
No, I don't want to waste everyone's time, but...
But...
I'm, I'm just curious to know. And then i- is there always a space for a person who qualifies? Do sometimes we run one class, two class, three class?
Absolutely. If there's, if we have, we have larger groups some year and smaller groups other years. We, at the eighth grade level, a student who met all of this criteria would not be turned away from taking.
Okay.
The honors algebra.
Okay.
Okay?
But three out of the five of those criteria they have to pass?
Three out of the five they have to meet.
Thanks.
So we're looking at teacher resources. So teachers are using connected math as a foundation of their instruction. And a common concern with connected math is the lack of basic skills practice. So students are being given, or we have, we've provided for the teachers a list of basic skills computation sheets. And there's one for each one of the grades. And so if you look at your handout number five, it's just an example of what one of the comp sheets look like for the, for the kids. There's one of these for each week for, so there are thirty-six weeks worth for each grade level for sixth, seventh and eighth. And then there's a toolkit that goes along with each one of the sections. So, and it's just a, a resource that they have, that's available that they can use to, when they're, as they're working on trying to beef up and keep current with their basic skills. And it's a whole big binder for each one of the grades and I just copied a couple of them out of there for you so that you'd have, just have a sense of what it's, what it's about. It doesn't take any class time. It's done at home and then it just keeps the kids current with some of the older skills that they really should have mastered and the teachers don't really want to or, or have time to, to provide support for these, for the general population within the classroom.
Our, I, I do want to say though, over the last year, our middle school teachers have spent significant time identifying where the gaps were in, in their skills. And they've worked very hard to continually assess this and provide the resources necessary for this kind of practice for the students without taking too much class time for this kind of practice because this kind of practice can be done independently.
So, so would you characterize that as flipped classroom or no?
Um, no.
Okay.
Not in this situation.
And are we using any flipped classroom instruction?
Strategies. Um, you know, I can't answer that well directly. I mean, I know we are in some content areas. I haven't talked to the math teachers. I mean, they're using Study Island and then they may review some of the aspects of Study Island. We had some people using some other software the same way where the students would work on the software independently and then teachers would revisit those concepts in the classroom. But I don't know that I qualify that or a flipped classroom kind of thing.
You know, you said this doesn't take a lot of time out of the classroom. So it's a, it's in effect is an instructional technique that kids are using at home.
Right.
And it's being reinforced in school.
That's right, right.
And it, your first shot at it is work on it.
It's got the flavor of it.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, for sure.
We've mentioned a couple of times the use of Study Island or other software packages. How do we know that students have access to this?
We set up those accounts.
Yeah, they're all...
But it's not just having an account, it's having the hardware to actually access it.
I see what you mean, at home.
So do we know that they have computers available to them at home? I'm assuming in our community probably most kids do, but do we have a way of identifying? Who do not and provide them with the tools they need so they don't miss out on those practice opportunities?
To sort of follow up on what Nick is saying, if a child is...
To sort of follow up on what Nick is saying, if a child is not using Study Island, do we know that that's because they don't want to use it or that they can't use it? At what point do we figure that out?
You know, I can't speak to directly exactly how the teachers are working them, but you know, the teachers know their students pretty well. And I have had students talk to me, I mean, teachers talk to me in the past about students who don't have access to technology and making the computer labs accessible to them beyond their school day so that they can access. I'm not sure exactly how they're surveying their classes to get this information, but...
I think that would be very good information to have.
I have talked about the fact, that's one of the data points that I don't feel that we have.
Well, I mean, we've been asking, yeah, we've been asking for years to find out what, what the hardware is for years. I would say this is, it's a case sort of important. It really, I think, indicates the value of having that information.
Really from an educational policy point of view, one of the things that concerns is having equal access to learning and practice.
Absolutely.
That having a, a good grasp beyond the anecdotal.
And like I said, our teachers may have a very good grasp. I don't have a good grasp of that information to answer your question because I didn't ask it directly, but...
There's a resource issue that would come to us to try to identify, then we have to have that information. It staying in the classroom may be good, but it doesn't help make a change.
No, I hear you. I agree with you.
Okay. So, and then there's one other, handout number four is an example of a model curriculum unit lesson that came from the ratios and rates curriculum unit for grade six. And I just pulled one lesson out of it, but you can really see that it's, it's pretty good. It's really rigorous and it's really, it does a nice job, I think, kind of looking at what some of the standards are and also providing sort of a, an inquiry-based or project, problem-based lesson to work on throughout the class. And it's well laid out and it's, uses materials that most well-provisioned classrooms will have. And it also gives the times and the outcomes and the standards. So just, it's just an example of what some of the standards-based materials that are out there and the model curriculum units that are out there are, are giving to the students. And then the last thing that I have to talk about is the handout number six, which is just a protocol for the data conversations. So if you look at, it's only a single page, but it does give kind of a focus to how we're looking at the data and how those conversations are, are being run. And so this is just a protocol that I use with the math teachers when we take the data and look at it and try and analyze it and come to some agreement about what we're going to do based on the data that we're getting. So I know that was longer than my allotted time.
That's okay.
I'll walk us.
Are we interrupted? Not your fault.
Just had one more question. Under the, sort of the general meeting objectives, when you look down at grades three to eight only, you talk about integrating MCAS open response questions. Is that because they represent a type of question that we want our students to use, but that's not to prepare them for the MCAS test because it's something like that to get out the window?
Right. Those are available, those were available standards, you know, test questions. And obviously they don't have them in any, you know, below grade three. So that's why we don't have them. But it's, you know, it's always a concern for districts, district leadership, how are we doing on our standardized tests? So, so it's just, it's just a way to bring in some of those.
It's also a way to teach teachers, teach students how to open, how to answer open response questions.
Well, yeah, that's sort of my question because I, you know, in, in two years, are these going to say Park open response questions?
Sure, yeah. In fact, they probably should say that now because those Park test questions, which you have an example of, are, you know, are in many ways better or more rigorous or more, there's more ways of answering them.
More complex.
Yeah, more complex.
There we go. Okay. I'm going to walk you through a little bit of information about high school math. And I saw Cheryl asking Steve, what is?
CNN. I got it. It's Concepts and Skills, right? I got it.
It's right here.
I heard college prep over here and I'm like, hello.
Before I go, before I go into this, I do want to thank Sue Stone, Department Chair for Math, and Mark Littlefield, who both collaborated with me around pulling the information about the high school together for you today. So, you know, once again, the high school math department is working just like all of the other teacher groups that you've heard about during the release days to align this curriculum, their curriculum. But the thing I think that is really important for us to understand, I know the question came up around leveling students at middle school. And then I know when we think about high school courses, we sort of think about tracks that students are on. And that's really what I'm going to emphasize as I talk to you today, that one of the things that we're very proud of here in Newburyport and the high school feels really good about is the fact that we offer a variety of sequences in the area of math for students, not necessarily what we would recognize as a track. You can see here that we have courses that are offered at the Concept and Skills level. We have courses that are offered at the college prep level. We have honors level courses as well as Advanced Placement. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit today about what the difference is between a sequence versus a track. And, and then I know there were some questions that came up around calculus at the high school and I'm going to talk a little bit about that as well. But students at the high school are encouraged to challenge themselves in a variety of ways and they've got many opportunities to do that with this floating sequence that is available to students at the high school. So as students complete class, and I think this is really important for parents to understand because so frequently parents feel like, if I don't get my child in an honors class as they enter high school, they're never going to be an honors student. And that's definitely not the case. In Newburyport, the way things are handled is when students complete a course, the teachers then recommend the next class level for that student. So for example, a student might start out in an Algebra I college prep class and then move on to a geometry honors class and an Algebra II honors class and a pre-calculus honors class. Or an Algebra I student could enter at a college level, college prep course and go on to geometry college prep and then on to Algebra II honors and pre-calc honors. So there's not a set track. And the thing that would be different if we were doing, setting tracks for students, it would look more like a student who entered at a college prep level for Algebra I would also go on to geometry college prep, Algebra II college prep, and pre-calc college prep with no movement. So our students in the district have the opportunity to just sequence math and they do that in a variety of ways. So for some freshmen, they start, may start in a Concept and Skills Algebra I and then go on to say an Algebra I college prep. And then perhaps they go to a, a Concept and Skills Geometry class and then go on to a Geometry college prep and an Algebra II college prep. It's really about where that student is entering, what they need at the time they enter, and how quickly they grow in the course that they're in as to what a teacher recommends for their next level of math class. Some kids might have an Algebra I college prep, a Geometry college prep, and the intro to Algebra II as a college prep. And then they might choose some things like Personal Finance or an intro to Probability and Statistics. So there's a variety of ways. Sophomores might take a Geometry honors class, an Algebra II honors class, and if they do really well and they have a goal of AP Calculus, juniors often take Pre-Calculus honors and AP Stats. Many juniors and seniors elect a semester of Personal Finance along with that. Some of our seniors elect Pre-Calculus and AP Stats. And I'm going to talk to you about Pre-Calculus in just a minute, which is the preparation for students going on to AP Calculus. And we also have a large number of students who participate in AP Statistics. And that is a really exciting thing. The scores have been really great and a lot of our students, this provides an opportunity for some of our students to succeed in an AP class that maybe have not been honors students in the past. So we've had as many as sixty students enrolled in AP Statistics in any one given year. So it's really expanding the boundaries of what we know traditionally as AP. It's a wonderful opportunity for our students. Now, I do want to talk to you a little bit about calculus. So years ago, calculus was offered at an honors and an AP level at the high school. But with our decrease in student population over the years and the increase in AP offerings, we haven't had large enough demand to justify a section of calc, just an honors level calculus class. Honors Pre-Calculus, which consists of trigonometry, functions, and advanced algebra topics, are the prerequisite for AP Calculus. This gives students a solid foundation of the topics needed to ensure success in AP Calculus. And then AP, you'll see on this list of courses that we offer, and I also provided you with the information from our, our catalog of studies here along with it so you could see the breakdown. AP Calculus AB is equivalent to Semester One Calc One in college, while AP Calculus BC is, is equivalent to Calculus One and Two in college. And we offer both of those, okay? So I think the greatest message I can send about the high school in mathematics instruction is that we don't have one sequence available to kids. We really have an unlimited amount of options for students in the area of math at the high school. Now, there's one other thing that I did give you as a handout and that is your handout number eight. And this was something that Mark Littlefield and I were talking about as we were talking about how to handle calculus at the high school level. And he said, oh, you know Angela, I'm going to send you the position statement that was put together by the Math Association of America and the National Counselors, Council of Teachers of Mathematics. And I think if you look here, you can see the position statement that talks about the importance of having students well-prepared to take any path that they'd like to when they get to the college level. And just having a student complete a course called Calculus in high school is not necessarily preparing students for what they need in college. And if you look at number two in the, in the numbered list below, number two reads, "The calculus course offered in secondary school should have the substance of a mainstream college-level course." That is what we offer. By offering AP Calculus at our high school, we are addressing that recommendation. On the PowerPoint, I also put here that you receive the PowerPoint, you can see that if you want to read any more about that position paper, the link to that is at the bottom as well as the full high school program of study, if you'd like to reference, reference that, or the Common Core State Standards around mathematics. So those are just additional resources for you to access if you'd like more information. And then just to wrap us up, these are some of the challenges that we're facing as we continue to move forward, forward with the work that we have underway. We've already talked to you about the vertical articulation of the mastery skills and concepts for each grade level and course that we offer in this, in this district. Making good decisions around the mathematics resources that we'll be using. We're taking a look at our honors placements and procedures, placement, procedures and policies. And the reason we're taking a look at that is that the middle school made a decision last year to not continue on with scholastic placement testing because we weren't seeing data that was well-aligned to the other data we had on our students. So we're, we're involved in conversations around, we're still using all of our other placement procedures for high school placement, but as far as our testing, that single test, we want to reexamine that. We'll be spending some time on that. We're going to need to make the transition around MCAS into Park. We'll be talking more about that, I'm sure, in the near future. And, and then also the work that we've talked to you about around assessments and district determined measures. So I hope we filled you up with lots of good math information tonight.
We did it in twenty minutes.
Don't think twice about asking us back. Before we, before these lovely ladies pack up or, do we have comments or questions? I, I just have one.
Okay.
No. The Iowa test that you use for algebra in the eighth grade. You're still finding that a good determiner? Because you had mentioned the high school maybe not so good?
The test that we're using, we switched to this test for algebra placement, the Iowa, because it is specific for algebra placement.
Oh, okay. How long have we been using it?
We just started. We were using GMAE information in the past as one of our, one of our markers. And we switched to the, the Iowa Algebra Placement because it gave us better information about algebra placement, specifically algebra.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
Going home with the math problems? How far did you get, Donna? You're up the aisle. Oh, thank you.
Or you know if you need more problems.
No, no more.
Next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
I don't have a lot, but I do want to share with you a letter that recently sent home to parents and guardians regarding this very topic, MCAS and Park. And I wanted to identify for parents and let the school committee know that in fact we, it speaks to us, Angela.
We're done.
That we are piloting Park this year. And I wanted to give parents information about Park, but we are still having all of our students participate in the MCAS. And the, the reason that we made that decision is because we want to have current data on all of our students. And that's the reason, that's the reason for it. But I wanted to explain that to parents. We also wanted to give them information. And again, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has not made a final decision, is my understanding, on that we are definitely going with Park. It would appear that we are going with Park, but that determination has not been made. But we tried to provide, this handout was to try to provide parents with some just general information. But I think it's important for, for you to know as well. And one of the things that I think should have demonstrated to you tonight in the presentation that Angela enlisted is how the Common Core State Standards are impacting instruction in the classroom. And it is very different. It's very, the types of instruction that we're doing is very different. It's much more, as we move forward, it's going to be much more application-based. We are going to be having more and more students collaborating and working together and trying to come up with, with different methods for problem solving. And, one of the things that came up, I had my, my superintendent's advisory council, the first meeting last Thursday night, I had just under fifty people that were there. I think that we had a very, very positive meeting, and one of the takeaways that I left that meeting with was some suggestions, and I had staff members who were present, I had a student, I had parents, I had community members who were there. And, I was really looking for topics, and one of the things that I think would be a great idea, and I have not talked with the leadership team, and I'm about this yet, but I wanted to inform you, that there, there is quite a bit of interest in really, for parents trying to understand Common Core State Standards and how they will be different. And I think that if we were to offer a forum on that, similar to just some of the information that you received tonight, to see how the expectations will be changing. Being able to provide parents with resources for, you know, I mean, as parents of young kids, you're always in the car, you're driving from one practice to another, that's what, that's, that's what you do.
That's how I learned my multiplication fact.
There are lots of activities that can happen, even while they're in the car. So, I mean, there's lots of resources we can be providing. So, I think as we move forward, head towards Park, continue to get better at the depth of the Common Core State Standards, and continue to increase our instructional practices. All of that information needs to be communicated out to the community and out to parents. And, so, one of the things that I will be talking with the leadership team about is to provide an educational forum on Common Core State Standards, and to have more examples available to them. And to also allow parents to come and, and ask some of the questions that they have. And I think that, you know, I'd like to be doing more of that kind of information. But, I, superintendent's advisory council met last Thursday night, so I haven't had a lot of time to even assimilate the information from that night. It was productive, we began at six-thirty, we, we ended at eight o'clock. I think we talked about a lot of different topics. I did roll out and, and talk with them about my idea of wanting to coalesce the school district around core ethical values, and beginning to really explore that this spring as we move forward, because I think it is going to be imperative to have sort of common goals that we can, we can all get our arms around and feel comfortable that this is what, what we want to focus on in Newburyport. In addition to that, I talked about the budget process, and I talked with them about getting more parents involved in understanding the budget. I know that as I move forward in working with Nancy Lysick and with the leadership team, one of the things that I want to be able to do is to make that information much more transparent, so that people can understand where we're spending money in the school district, and what it's being spent on. And I think parents and community members have to be a part of that conversation as we move forward, I think it's critical. And I think that they need to understand the, the actual process itself. Now, I'm learning the process for the first time, as I, as I work through it this year. But I will bet that at the end of the process, and at the end of my first budget, I may have some recommendations that I'm going to want to talk with the school committee about as we move forward. So, you know, and, and to, I, I believe Mr. Menon's point tonight, I think that, that there are definitely some things that as a leadership team, I, I would want to do earlier related to the budget. And I can tell you that already, that I just, I, I know from having, having, starting to work through it, that I know I'm going to want to start earlier next year, so. But, I, all in all, I think it was a, it was a very positive meeting. I had originally said I thought I would be doing something, you know, a couple of times. I know I will have at least one more superintendent's meeting before the end of this school year, but I also hope that, that I'll have an opportunity to perhaps do a couple of forums in there as well. But I think it was a very good first meeting, I, I, I was very pleased with the broad representation of folks who were there. And I think that's it for my superintendent's report.
Thank you. Mr. Decanter.
You had mentioned last week, or one of your prior previous meetings, that you had great hopes of having students involved in the...
Yes. I had one student who was there.
Oh, you did have a student?
I did, I did have a student who was there. So, so, and, and I will be reaching out to students to have more student representation in the future, so.
That's great. Thank you. Onto subcommittee reports, I'll start with joint ed. We met this evening. We updated the city council on our calendar for the next school year. We talked about why we didn't settle a two-year contract. We talked about the leadership model for the new Bresnahan School, that was presented to the school committee a couple weeks ago. We also updated on school building projects, including the request for the school committee and the city council to be able to have a tour of the Bresnahan School. So, the superintendent and Steve Bergholm are going to try to set a time when a group of us can just go through, and that'll depend on the, the, what's happening in the schools at that time. But, I don't know if you follow, following Facebook or anything, but pictures are coming out about the, the classrooms inside, and they look beautiful. I just love to see, every Saturday, I go and sit in the parking lot and think, "Oh, this is really big." And, you know, but I haven't been inside yet, so I'd really like to go inside that. And, I met Amy Sullivan in the parking lot on Saturday, we're both kind of gawking at the school, so.
I do have, I do have a series of eight pictures on my phone, if anybody would like to take a look at them, some of the classrooms.
Jason's crawling with paparazzi, just trying to get pictures first.
True. And then, we, we had sent, the city councilor, Susan had sent them her entry plan and her priorities, so we talked about how that's going to tie into her superintendent's evaluation. We also asked that the city council present us, there seems to be, in all the reporting, a different figure for the percentage of the city budget that is the school budget. So, we really would kind of like to get a handle on that. The percentages have been bouncing lately, so, we just want to get a picture of where we are, and where we need to move from there, so.
Depends really on what's included.
That's what we're, that's exactly, that's exactly what we said. I mean, we know, and I, it, it was in the globe, forty-two percent. And at that point, we didn't know what that covered. You know, and then your state of the city, it was, I believe, fifty-two or fifty-four percent. So, we just want to get a handle on, you know, how much actual money, what is, you know, does the school system, do we have fifty-four percent of the, of the city budgeting at this point?
Well, fifty-four percent of the school budget is for education. And so, part of the education is the roughly, what, three hundred and fifty, no, it's four hundred thousand to Whittier. That's part of the education pie.
See, that's the, but see, these are the things that I think would make it...
Well, it's my budget, so that I can tell you what's the fifty-four percent is.
Okay.
And then you have four-point-five million in health insurance.
And does that recover, that, does that also cover retirement?
It, it covers retirements for those AFSB employees, teachers' retirements are separate. That comes out of the state, the teachers' retirement.
And that's not in that fifty-four percent budgeting?
No.
But the health insurance is?
Yes.
And I guess the other, well, I didn't mean to, this was supposed to be a subcommittee report, but, and then I guess the other question we had was, if this fifty-four percent of the funding, percentage of the pie includes health insurance, when you develop all your city budgets, like police, fire, do you break out their health insurance and include that in the pie as well?
No, but we do for the enterprise accounts, because those are self-sustaining.
I don't know what those, that is.
That would be water, sewer, and harbor master, which are fee-based, self-sustaining accounts. And so, they have to cover in their budgets, because they are self-sustaining, their insurance costs for their employees.
Okay. So, so, up to this point, I think we haven't heard the figure of the health insurance piece of the equation. And I just, I, we, we asked the question, you know, is it broken out? And you just answered it. So, when the, when the police and the fire submit their budget, health insurance is or is not included in?
No, they have other, for example, injured on duty, you know, which is, so there's other requirements for public safety, individuals as opposed to...
So, we're not, so are you saying that your, that the presentation you made is not apples-to-apples? It's apples-to-oranges, tangerines and lemons?
No, it's pretty much...
Everybody's got a different calculation?
No.
I'm trying to understand that, because insurance costs are fixed costs, they're costs.
Yeah, but, no, are they broken out by department, was the question the chair asked in the mayor, I said, "No."
Okay, but they are for the, but they're, I guess they're included in the school budget.
No, they're not in the school budget.
So, how do you go from forty-two percent to fifty-four?
Because when you look at forty-two percent, you're looking at just the actual Newburyport school operation budget. It doesn't include education, which includes the health insurance, and includes Whittier, which are all part, if I, you know, if you're looking at the pie, that's part of education.
We're an element in the piece of the pie that's called education. The local agency...
Forty-two percent of that pie.
Whatever it is, forty-two percent of the pie.
Actually, I think it's higher than that.
Or, yeah, but when you add everything else that is associated with education, it becomes a bigger piece. Charter school mayor?
That comes off the top of our assessment, so that's really not included in our operation, our, our city budget, because it doesn't come right out of our, that comes off of our, our...
State aid.
Our state aid assessment, so it's different.
So, it's more than an expense in our budget, it's a reduction in our state aid?
Correct. So, it doesn't get reflected in that.
How about S. Saggy?
That's also off the top.
You know, I, I'm inclined to think that a, that a general sort of meeting in which a lot of this is explained, would, would really clarify things. That would be very helpful to me, because it, again, it, I know that people have approached me when they saw that figure, saying, "So, I guess you guys have more money than you are saying you have." Because you guys are saying that, you know, we read the DOR report, and it says forty-two percent, but actually it's fifty-four percent, so maybe you, maybe you don't need the money. And this, and this is what people are, are asking me, sort of, I would just love to see it all sort of laid out very, very clearly, so that I can communicate it clearly and understand it a little better myself, and not...
Well, I think that was the point of the subcommittee...
Yeah, and I think that that's, I think it's a real good idea.
Conversation, that we all need to be, you know, kind of working off the same, the same page, so we understand it. Because this, these percentages, I don't want to say it casually, they've been bandied about, but there's a twelve percent discrepancy somewhere.
I, I don't know that it's a discrepancy though, Cheryl, I wouldn't call it a...
Well, a difference, a difference.
A difference, yes, discrepancy, no. And I think there, those two words are very different in, in what they mean. There are education-related expenses that are carried by the city, that are not necessarily anything that we have any control or, or say-so over. And, so that is what makes some of that, that difference up. And, you know, what we do have control over, and what we do actually have to work here as a school committee within, is the, the forty-two percent figure. And I think that, at least to me, that, that is clear, I agree, we can get a clearer pie chart of how everything is sliced. But I, I, I think it's, it's clear to me that there are expenses that the city picks up that are related to education that we do not in any way influence.
I would be happy to put that on our agenda for the next meeting, and be able to present you with, you know, at least a detail, because it will be the same, you know, the types of, you know, categories as we go forward into FY15. You know, what's included in education will be included in education.
I was going to say FinCom, but it'd be nice to hear it in public zone.
Can I ask one other kind of naive question? So, how about like, building and grounds, or something simple like cutting the grass for all of the schools? How does that get costed out, or what budget does that come off of? Because it's clear that it isn't school people riding around on riding mowers, it's city personnel. So, because, and I only say that because...
You could start keeping track of those hours and billing the schools, but...
Well, no, I, I'm going to say that...
No, I know what you're saying, no. The DPS picks up that work.
Yeah, because we, we visited a school in a superintendent search a number of years ago, out in the western part of the state, and they actually, they're head of the, they didn't have a whole lot of resources there, head of the facilities, used to ride around and cut all the grass.
I thought you were going to say director of curriculum.
No, ride around and cut all the grass.
Jeez.
It was one big campus, it was one big campus.
We do allocate our summer help to do more of the grass-cutting of the schools in the summer, because we're able to, we have a, a small budget to be able to bring on some additional, you know, college kids for summer help, and that's really typically allocated to doing mowing.
Right, okay. But I know that's not, there's a lot of times this big machinery, and it's the city, you know, the DPS people doing it, so, okay.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe that that's the only committee that has met since last week. Policy, do you have a date?
Policy meeting is going to be in two weeks.
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Regularly scheduled to time...
When, Bruce?
Regularly scheduled time is seventeenth.
Okay. Five-thirty. Five-thirty, me.
Mm-hmm.
And, Fin, FinCom, I think we're working on a meeting?
Yeah, working on, depending on where the, I guess the final administrative recommendations are in the budget, like to meet and maybe have a chance to hear what those are.
Okay. That's it, could I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Discussion?
We have to...
All of, no, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, opposed? It was unanimous.